Just monitor the comments, make sure that people can hear okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right then, so we're going to open our select board meeting at five and we're going to get a motion to sign the warrants.
Motion to sign those warrants. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Is that here for the March night?
You were, you and Sonia were.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so I'd like to approve the minutes for March night. And I know I was here on the force, I'll approve March fourth as well.
We're doing both?
Yeah, just a minute.
Oh, second that, all in favor? There you go. Okay, so go to select board, none or business. Uncle Kippy's liquor license renewal. Okay, do I have a motion to accept, uh, nothing's changed? Motion to accept Uncle Kippy's, uh, Kippy's corner. Light, uh, liquor license?
Uh, I think you've sampled, but I will say. Second?
All in favor? So you're just doing beer and wine, Lynn? Oh, just beer and wine?
And then you down to just takeout?
No, it's.
We're down to nothing.
Nothing? Oh, okay.
I got guys coming looking tomorrow, I'm gonna give you an estimate and stuff like that.
For what? For, for takeout?
Takeout, cause you can't, you can't.
Oh, you do a takeout.
Yeah, you can't have, uh.
Yeah, cause it might be going wrong, the president said July, maybe June or August.
Well, it is bad.
There's all kinds of restaurants.
I know there is, but I don't, who's gonna monitor that, not for, you know, I, I don't even wanna do this.
Well, maybe you don't wanna be exposed, that'll be the outside of the fresh air for yourselves, for your personal self.
They said they're gonna close the border off.
They did, this morning.
Did that this morning.
For to non-essential travel.
Well, they have to come across.
Yeah, so they can come across.
And some of them have dual citizenship, so they can.
Did you see a coast guard boat that was, uh, just loitering under the channel?
Probably monitoring the whole thing.
Loitering.
Loitering.
We have another item that you can do as well, is sign the sewer commitment that we just finished today.
Okay, we need to mo, make a motion, we sign the sewer commitment of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred, three hundred and eighty-four, thirty dollars and thirty-six cents.
I will second that.
All in favor? Oh, wow.
We can do anything to do.
You guys are all stacked.
Do you want your copy of it now?
I'm waiting for a call from the doctor, but I'm waiting on one.
Thank you for coming.
He said he called me today and I.
Stay, stay healthy.
Stay strong, stay healthy.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Have a good one.
Guys get a chance to look at the proclamation? It's kinda screwed up.
Yep.
I have it on. Yeah, she's seconded that.
Okay, so the next would be appoint election person, shellfish committee. So I guess. Okay, here's something that we can know too. Renee wrote, they asked for a letter from us saying the select board of the town of Lubeck has requested, requested the United States Campabello Island. We run to be allowed to remain open, the town of Lubeck relies on Campabello for mutual aid services for ambulance and fire support. Both Lubeck and Campabello are small communities that rely on each other in emergency situations, so I make a motion to sign this.
Absolutely, yeah.
Second, all in favor? Okay, so I made a motion, she made a second, and we're signing it for you. We didn't know where the, the election clerk people went, so we went to something else.
We've got election clerk people and, um, a shellfish, um, committee member. And I'd like to appoint Sheldon Lyons as deputy animal control officer, they're gonna back each other up. Rhonda's the deputy shellfish warden, and Sheldon is the deputy.
So we have the motion for Sheldon Lyons to fill the position of deputy animal, animal control officer?
I will second that.
All in favor? Okay, go ahead. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Ann Seavey as an election clerk, Greg DeLuigi as an election clerk, Gwendolyn Clover as an election clerk, Nancy Bagley as an election clerk, Margaret Bailey as an election clerk, Sonia Bailey as an election clerk, and Debbie Holmes as election clerk, Rita Rose as an election clerk, and Duanne Peace as an election clerk.
So moved.
I don't have Tracy Sotell's.
Uh, we've got no Tracy here.
Where was Tracy Sotell supposed to be?
She's supposed to be in the shellfish committee. If you're gonna make a motion, I'll go make a second.
Make the motion, Tracy Sotell as, uh, shellfish committee?
I will second that.
Did we second this thing here, cause we made a mo, I made a motion to do all that, who seconded it?
Yeah, I seconded all of it.
All in favor, but we're gonna sign all this.
We have all our clerks.
Yeah.
There are plenty to sign. And we didn't sign it, I didn't, did we sign that liquor license in blue?
Yep.
I don't remember doing it.
Well, they did, it was a long ago.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you didn't.
That means I get a free drink.
I've never had any drinks, so.
We can, we can adopt the road, or we have to have a moment?
Carol, you made the motion to stop to do the election clerk.
Yes. Right now, we can seem to handle this, but when it gets into summer, it's gonna be a little crazy. Don't you think? Now, let me just, if anybody out there is watching, I just would like to say that we did close the town office, but if you want to pay a bill or your taxes, you can pay on the phone. And this would be a good time to discuss the fact that it was brought to my attention that waiving the fee for credit cards from our end, which I think is two and a, two, two and a half percent.
Yeah.
That we would go back to paying that because they can't come in person.
Yes, yeah.
That they wanna pay over the phone, of course you can always mail it in, but that would be for the time of the emergency.
Absolutely fantastic.
What about vehicle registrations?
Well, all of that is thirty, doesn't, nothing expires until thirty days after the rent is lifted, so.
Oh, so.
That's what Governor Mills, I believe that's what I read. We made, I made a motion that we waived the credit card fee. And Dan seconded it, and we all voted, so, you know, so that you wanna pay by phone.
Now, just for.
Just for the time of the emergency.
But I just want everybody to understand that we can't waive it, but the town will absorb it.
Yes.
We're gonna cover it by contingent.
Right, it's not really a waiver, it's like, you don't have to pay it, we're gonna pay it.
Who seconded?
And then, um, what else were we talking about, Cameron? Did we do any other motions?
That was.
Oh, no, Jason had a question about registrations, does anyone answer that?
Yep, the, uh, we can, the town office will be staffed for people that can, want to re-register if they want to, but the state has allowed for a thirty-day, um, great, grievance, really, grace period for even after the expiration of their current registration. If it's, if it's expiring this month, it doesn't go for people that have expired before.
Starting today, I believe, she signed it that.
But our town office will be manned and staffed by clerks who will answer the phones, people just call in. People can email us a copy of their registrate, their insurance cards, mileage.
Traces.
Paid by phone, the credit card, and we'll mail them a copy of the registration and their stickers.
If we do traces, I don't.
No, it's, the computer's coming up.
Cool, I just know that'll be one of the big questions.
So let's just read the proclamation while we have a little bit of time, 'cause somebody saw it. Due to the imminent threat of a pandemic of coronavirus COVID-19, the town of Lubeck is issuing this emergency proclamation on March eighteen, twenty twenty. This proclamation is to declare civil emergencies in all sections of the town. As of March nineteen, twenty twenty, all municipal departments will be staffed but closed to the public until further notice. The town office will be, um, staffed to assist public with needs via phone and email. This includes general assistance, please call the office at seven three three two three four one. In accordance with Governor Janet Mills' state of emergency proclamation. There shall be no gatherings of more than ten people, therefore, the special town meeting scheduled for this evening has been canceled. All non-essential meetings are canceled at the Lubeck Fire Hall until further notice. The emergency operations center will be located at the Lubeck Town Office. The public should reference the CDC Center of Disease Control website at cdc.gov for current instructions. And, um, there is an ordinance, uh, emergency management policy that allows the chair of the select board, uh, the emergency management director, which is Renee, and the fire chief to have made that proclamation today. Of course, we did tell the select board who was doing that. So we needed to do that so that we could cancel the special town meeting, nobody felt comfortable coming with twenty-five people. Especially when the governor came out today and said, no more than ten people. So that, I didn't want that to, nobody wanted that, anybody exposed, that didn't necessarily, we just have to do that later. I just read the proclamation when you were gone. Adopt a road posting ordinance. Okay, it gets in our packets as a, uh, road posting ordinance that we can adopt. And then, once that's adopted, we adopt it, we can then post something that says, here it is. Town of Lubeck ordinance restricting vehicle weight and posted roads, did you get this from somebody else?
That came from MMA.
MMA, so.
There you go.
So obviously, that's probably okay. It gives us an authority to, there is gonna be quite a bit of construction going on, so I'm not sure how that works. If there's a heavy equipment that has to come to either the sidewalk project or safe harbor, but is this, is it?
This is more for.
Let's adopt the ordinance, and then it's up to us what we, what road we post, and for what reason.
Go through the select board.
It comes through the select board, Ricky will come to me with a suggestion, I'll bring it to you guys, and you guys will be the ones to post the road.
So we'll need to have reasons why we're posting or anything like that.
He has concern about, he has a concern about a, a town road that is a dirt road and a possible logging operation going on, and with the, the melting season right now, it's not a lot's frozen, so.
Okay, so just like there is maybe a month where it's really mushy and they just don't want heavy.
Yeah, you can't close them down for long periods.
So this, yeah, this would always be, um, contingent on our, our agreement, so.
And this is an ordinance, the, the select board do have the authority to adopt without the legislative plating. Most ordinances have to go before the town.
My understanding is that a posting does not include fuel trucks.
I don't imagine it includes essential ser, essential services. You're actually listed as, as essential service.
Yep.
She, Janet Mills Rhodes listed all the essential services.
But I'm saying a road doesn't, doesn't matter.
Right, but you're not, not bound by that, it's like some private individual who wants to make money off it, doesn't want to ruin the roads because they wanna do it at a time that is good for the road.
The exemption, we're on section four of the ordinance. Following vehicles are exempt under state law, any vehicle delivering home heating tube or organic animal bedding and operating in accordance with a permit, blah, blah, blah. Any vehicle transporting well-drilling equipment. There's a whole bunch.
Yeah, there's a lot of exceptions.
Following vehicles are also exempt. Twenty-three thousand pounds or less, vehicles that are registered twenty-three thousand or less. Emergency vehicles.
Well, we're gonna, we'll go by solid waste.
You, you will find that most people will check anyway, when you see a road posted, they'll call you or something like that. I don't have a problem with it, just as long.
Okay, so did you wanna make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the, the ordinance.
I'll, I'll second the motion to do that.
All in favor? All righty. So let's see now, where are we? Crash on the side of the road. So open fire hall painting base. Oops, and there, and there in the.
We got one.
We got one, well, that's. Well, we survived a fisherman's farm, didn't we, so far? I think it's been enough days, I'm like, oh, we were with a lot of people down there, weren't we?
We sure were. And how many rest area, did you stop at on the way back?
None, well, maybe, maybe an urbing, but I bought, uh, hand sanitizer there. So.
You gotta go buy a truckload.
She's, well, um, we don't have Rachel here tonight because she's self-quarantined because she went to Mexico, even though it wasn't one of the listed countries, she felt that she would quarantine herself for fourteen days.
That's very smart, really.
Well, I don't think she wanted to be responsible for her, anybody, you know? It's always a good idea, we like to see our select and follow the rules. I, on the other hand, never got to go anywhere, so I don't have to quarantine myself. Oh, well, next year.
If you were quarantined, you wouldn't be here.
That's right.
They asked me if I, if I didn't have this social distance, and I said yes, last thirty years.
I had someone tell me, I said, yeah, I'm just humping down like everyone else, and we sit at home, have, you know, a glass of wine and all that. And someone sent me a picture, and they're just in socializing, they had two bottles of wine.
Well, great, good for you, you can alcohol, use alcohol, please.
There you go, you can.
So what's the difference?
Splurge and splash all over, right?
That's it.
Yeah, that's an expensive, uh, hand sanitizer.
I will tell you, downstate, it's terrible. My mother said, if you can get a loaf of bread down there, for a long time.
Downstate?
Actually, one of us.
Down in Belfast area.
Cause we don't eat, you know, we don't eat meat and stuff like that, so we went down to Hannovers a couple of days ago. Entire meat section was empty, except for the Beyond Meat burgers and sausages, and we just said, thank you, thank you.
So you just got whatever.
We got what we wanted.
We do have some, another, another thing we can pass. Sent home, uh, requested that one of our employees who falls in the category of high risk would be mandatorily sent home for fifteen days with pay.
Yes.
And then we will reevaluate August birth, April birth.
Totally, April birth.
We just do on that responsibility. So.
Having a breathing issue.
So I need a motion that we can do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
So what, I'm sorry, what was that motion for?
Well.
I didn't hear it elaborated.
We sent, uh, the motion is.
Due to health, we had an employee.
We had an employee who falls under a high, um, high-risk category, sixteen and older with, with a, um, underlying health condition. That was sent home for a mandatory fourteen-day self.
So this is already happening?
Well, we're, it doesn't, it just started at four, but if, if I didn't get the motion, it, maybe back at work tomorrow, but I needed a motion.
And I don't, we don't want that.
No.
When you have a respiratory problem, trust.
And we got tons of big spreadsheet projects we can second.
So, and we will reevaluate April birth. The, the state has given us a Form Seven to fill out for any expenditures we incur. The emergency, um, team that has been, um, brought together and is gonna be working out of here could exec, could actually, uh, we could purchase equipment, you know, hand sanitizers. We can get certain things to help the town, of course, we, right now, the EMTs and people are getting them, but things like that, I see that we could pass those out, and, cause I don't, I think it's gonna last longer than two weeks. So. This is the bid?
This is the bid.
We passed the motion for the employee that's fallen in the high-risk category to get, go, go home for fourteen days.
Motion by?
Like, did he second it?
I didn't.
Did I second it?
Some, those guys did it.
Those guys.
How many days?
Take them, take one of the other.
Fourteen days.
Yes, till the next, our next meeting. Okay, this bid is for for Kenny and Sons quotation to paint labor three men for the Lubeck Town Office meeting room, thirty-nine hundred dollars. I don't know, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna defer to you guys.
What are they painting?
Painting this room, the bathroom, the trim.
Trim outside?
Nope.
Trim is here.
All inside, the baseboard.
And I wasn't here last.
No, this was just something between the fire chief and I, we've got funds.
I think I'm gonna defer to the fire chief, just whether, to see if they wanna continue looking for quotes, cause they.
You want me to phone him?
Seems kind of.
I think we should, I think we should continue.
Yep.
That's Ralph Kenny. But, I mean, I don't know, now that there's gonna be a lot of work, it would, this would be a really good time to paint this room, since we can't have any meetings in here, so. Yeah, I think, I would like to make a motion to defer the decision to the fire chief, is it not coming out of his budget? Well, then, I think he needs to make.
I'll second that, I think Bobby needs.
Yeah, all in favor? Let him decide.
I mean, the price is not that bad.
No, I mean, I don't know, that's why I said I'm just deferring to you. I mean, if it gets it done with three people quickly, great.
Yep, that sounds fine. Who seconded?
I don't know, can't remember. Hold on, wait a minute. All right then, so the CDC update was pretty much.
Did we do the trash on the side of the road?
Oh, we didn't do trash on the side of the road?
I had a phone call from a resident of the North Lubeck that was concerned with the litter on side of the road, and just was frustrated. I told her, um, I'd bring it to the select board, it's publicized, um, encourage people to pick up the trash, and we, I told her about this, the community pickup we have in May, there's another one in September for the beach. Um, we can put up a sign for no littering, it's about all you can do.
Is it every springtime thing?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just common sense.
It just happens.
Yeah, I did see Mr. Brown, Bob Brown, out there, and that's, I'm sure that's a spark.
Was he picking stuff up?
Cause everybody throws their stuff out right on that track. And I saw just the other day, Bob Brown down there, and he filled up almost a pickup truck load on his own account.
Wow.
Bottles, cans, and trash that people throw.
Wow. That's like amazing.
I usually do an annual Dixie to County.
Yeah.
Cause it's like two and a half miles down to that, I'll do four or five tall trash bags.
We keep, we try to keep the upper side of the road, you know, cleaned up and everything, and it.
But I do know there's a, a, a fine establishment, generally, even if you just find yourself picking up some trash and tying it up and leaving it on the side of the road, I know there's a fabulous business that will, just pick it up, kind of kindness in our heart.
Yes, we do.
Oh, oh, no, I, that was a kindness of her heart.
Right, right.
But I did see Bob out there, he, he worked all day, yeah, oh, did a phenomenal job, you know?
And if everybody did that driveway to driveway.
That's the thing, just driveway to driveway.
Well, we just, we need to get a big cleanup kind of mentality going in soon.
We do, cause that one down there.
Well, when the snow finally melts, that's when everything shows up.
I think I can kind of speak to the cleanup stuff, like, you know, it's all donated, so. We started off, two dumpsters down on, on the old dump road, they fill them up, over two. Now they're down to a half a dumpster, uh, to town cleanup. I mean, two, three, six yard dumpsters every single year, we don't even fill one dumpster anymore. And it's not to lack of turnout, I think it's because the word is done out.
I see improvement.
I see a huge improvement in the last four, five years.
What do you think we should have a cleanup day, we should designate a day, we should make a motion.
Day, everybody picks their different days.
What is the town that does, they do like two or three days, and what they'll do is they'll wrap it up in a white bag, and I almost see it down the center of the road. It's down as you're heading into Hancock County. And I think it's A to remind everyone to do it on that day.
Yeah.
But they like, it was right on the side, and some places right in the middle of the road, and so you'd slow down because you're like, what are all these trash bags?
Wouldn't that be a good idea, have one of these done, like, maybe April fifteenth or something?
I can tell you, we work a lot with the, uh.
April sixteenth.
We work a lot.
Day after taxes.
We work a lot with the nonprofit landowners, and they have their own cleanup days, and we donate to those. And there might be three or four different cleanup times, then the town always has one or two.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, can we have one town, one that, well, when would you think would be good, Jason?
Well, they used to do it whenever the kids weren't in school, because the kids down there, all, phenomenal.
May or may not be doing that.
We usually have the recycling committee coordinate with the school, but we don't know if we're gonna have it, right?
Yeah.
And it's on the agenda tonight.
Why don't you like that?
Why don't we just have a day? It'll give them, people something to do, to help clean them.
Yeah.
But it would have to be one day so that the, the town can coordinate, and what happens? Do you give us a dumpster, or the town people collect it, put it in the dumpster? And then you just pick the dumpster?
They can use any dumpster we have in town, we're gonna do a town cleanup.
Some things might be frozen still, I know.
Yeah, I didn't.
Well, not, not, yeah, the end of April, maybe.
And we let them, especially when school kids were doing it, use any one in town, any dumpster we have in town, because.
Maybe next, maybe way April or mid-May, prior to Memorial Weekend and the marathon and all those things.
How about May second, it's a Saturday.
Well, public work is gonna work on May second?
We did it over weekend, four days.
You got it all.
We did the whole weekend, like Friday,周三, Sunday, and Monday they pick up.
Oh, okay, well, let's do that thing.
We'll do it on Friday, the, May first, May day.
Okay, perfect.
May day.
So we have a motion, Jason, did you make that motion?
Yep.
Did you second it?
Yes, I did.
All in favor? Oh, my goodness, well, I guess we have no committee updates for now, and, um, everyone is just, um, one of the things I was thinking is if you just limit your traveling to essentials. I mean, I know everybody's gonna feel a little stir-crazy, but get out, walk, get some fresh air. We enjoy a really beautiful ninety-two miles of shoreline, nobody says you can't go and walk on the beach. I mean, you can't go for a little walk, one of the trails, and, I mean, the people that are in the cities, they can't go out.
I listened to, there was a couple doctors, and one, one doctor, the prominent one, uh, who was saying, one of the things you should do is, is act like you do have it, and what you would do if you did, even if you don't. So you do that, always protect it with what you're doing, what you're touching. And the other one says is what you can do during times like this is, you know, obviously, a lot of it's a respiratory. If you do smoke, why not commemorate this and stop? You know, and if you don't exercise, maybe.
Yes.
Go out and, and, and just walk for half an hour. And as people know, in this town, you can, you can walk in the middle of July, walk some of these trails, and you'll, even in our busiest season, you'll never pass anybody. So get out and exercise, get some fresh air, and, uh.
We will be also, we will be having our, you will be meeting as selectmen and televising it, and you can call seven three three two three four one for any public comment, and there'll be always at least three of us here to conduct a meeting, where you have to do that to carry on the business of the town. And Suzette and Renee and, I'll be there, I'll pop in and out of the town office like I do. And they'll be here to answer calls and help, and Bobby Hood has already been here two or three times, advising us on how to work the emergency management. So if you have any questions at all, we have all kinds of referrals, referral forms, sheets, phone numbers, anything you can do to help if you're having to stay home, call, if you need somebody to get you groceries, we'll, we'll try to find people to, if you need time to do that.
LCOC, the pantry is really stepped up.
You know, this is a small community, and with our neighbors across the way in Campabello, we hope that they'll be able to come as well over the bridge, we're working on that.
The Lions Club has also stepped forward to help in assistance with things, so.
So you're not alone.
Lots of community members are coming forward, and we appreciate it. Uh, the Cubs Hook Institute, they've contacted us.
So let's hope that we don't have any cases at all. We don't right now, it's one in Hancock County, and that's.
It's not referred on the CUC yet, but it's Penobscot County.
Penobscot, yeah, that's the one. And there may be one in Hancock, so hopefully, it doesn't come here, you know, we're just a little, that's a little community here, and if we all pay attention to washing our hands and not going out unnecessarily, and maybe, maybe we can beat it.
Stay home.
And stay home, and try to, yep.
Do not go near older folks, be as bad as, trust me, as bad as you wanna go see your folks, don't do it. Get your sack.
Call them, call them on the phone.
You can call them, you can do that, Facebook.
FaceTime.
FaceTime, where you see the person's face, so. Anyway, uh, we'll be here in two weeks, and the town office is open, but not to the public, it's open for phone calls and referrals. And good luck, everybody.
Lots of.
Motion to do it.
Sorry, for those, I do have a couple questions. Uh, the first one, um, you canceled the special town meeting tonight, do you have a projected date when it will be reset? Something like that.
There's just no way you're on.
There's no way of knowing, there's nothing on there that isn't, that is so critical that we can't wait. We'll have to wait now. I mean, we were hoping to get all that done because there was just some.
There's housekeeping.
Protocols, housekeeping, accepting grant monies and things, but, um, we will definitely get a special town meeting when we can meet with more than ten people.
When they, when the emergency is lifted.
Okay, and the second question, is there any sense as to what the emergency?
Okay, and the second question, is there any sense as to what the emergency will lead to the sidewalk construction and therefore impacting the marathon?
We are meeting with the Washington County, um, Washington Street Sidewalk Group outside Friday, and they're, and we are going ahead with the sidewalk construction. If there is any delays, we will let the public know, but as far, we know, everyone is on board with constructing.
So at this point, no delays are anticipated?
There are no anticipations.
Governor Mills said this only.
I spoke with the manager the other day.
You can't ask him?
No. And he said there's, they're gonna go ahead, and I mean, just, I mean, there's nothing gonna slow them down on that.
Governor Mills mandate today did not involve construction, no, so.
They're outdoors, they're not gonna be face-to-face.
As long as they can get supplies.
And they, they do have a vendor locally, that they're gonna get all their gravel from.
That was definitely one of our concerns, so that was a good question.
Yeah, all right.
So we should have some updates on that on, uh, the ne- our next meeting, and if you see people wandering around Friday over there at noon time, it's the group looking at the sewer and the water, looking at all, just, they're once over, they're, they're coming up from Augusta to, uh, sign off on, I guess, the notice to proceed. So, uh, motion to.
Motion due, and I second it.
All in favor?
Be well, everybody.
Okay, yes, be well.
Very well. That's where it came from, probably from the plague days.
Yeah, confirmation regarding cross-border, can I copy that?
Oh, yeah.
As of.
Oh, you know what, it's probably.